Ninth day of July, the time is nine o'clock, the board of commissioners in session to conduct this open weekly business meeting. Are there any changes to the agenda?
There is one change.
Okay.
You mean the motion?
Yep, made a motion.
I move to amend the agenda to remove the agreement number three, zero, one, two, zero from the agenda to be brought back by the staff when it's ready for consideration. And that is item five, room number five, nine, C, E, nine, E on the printed agenda.
Okay, is your second to the motion?
Second.
Do you read the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's been changed. Before we proceed, we'll do a little introduce yourself for the record.
Brad Smith, Suster's office.
Jay Byrne, your resources.
Sean Rain, paramedics.
Beverly Phillips, operations.
Josh Brown, operations.
Bob Carney, operations.
Tony Gage, your public conundrum.
Tim Sturgis, clerk's office.
I T.
I T guy.
Katie Reed, clerk's office.
Bob Perkins, Ada County procurement.
Beth Ma, treasurer.
Okay, okay, all three commissioners are present. Good enough, thanks a lot. Now we have some, we've changed the agenda a little bit and we have some unfinished business. I'll take, I'll accept the motion to remove the unfinished business from the table.
I move to remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Bob, it's all yours.
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. Before you this morning, under unfinished business is two items, the first of which is the final ranking and award recommendation for RFP two, four, zero, five, two. The Ada County Custodial Services for Benjamin Touchmark and Elder twenty twenty four. And the evaluation team has completed the evaluations and was prepared to make an award this morning. But we received a protest from Vanguard Cleaning Systems in response to the award recommendation. Therefore, we'd like to retable the award recommendation to the July twenty third, two thousand twenty four Open Business Meeting for further consideration. And then in the meantime, we'll meet with you soon to discuss the protest and whether that protest has merit or not.
Okay, I'll accept the motion to table the award till the twenty third day of July.
I'll move to table the final ranking and award recommendation for RFP two, four, zero, five, two. Ada County Custodial Services for Benjamin Touchmark and Elder twenty twenty four to July eighteenth, twenty twenty four.
Twenty third.
July twenty third, twenty twenty four.
Yes, thank you.
I'll take the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Carries.
Our second item under unfinished business this morning is the final ranking and approval of the pre-approved list for civil engineering services. This is RFQ two, four, zero, five, five, the Ada County Pre-approved List for Civil Engineering Services. And the evaluation team has completed the evaluation of the qualification statements and would like to submit a letter of their recommendation for your consideration.
Okay, did you read the letter?
Yeah, happy to. Letter dated July ninth, two thousand twenty four, to the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Department regarding RFQ two, four, zero, five, five. Dear members of the board, the evaluation committee has evaluated the eleven responses for RFQ two, four, zero, five, five. A ranked list of qualified candidates for the pre-approved list for civil engineering services was determined by evaluation scoring. The ranked list of the top five qualified firms ranked in order of evaluation scoring are as follows. Number one is Breckenland Design, and they had a score of eighty point three, three. Number two is K P F F Consulting Engineers, with a score of seventy eight point six, seven. Number three is Keller Associates Incorporated, with a score of seventy eight point three, three. Number four is KM Engineering L L P, with a score of seventy eight point zero, zero. And number five, Revhab P L L C, with a score of seventy two point zero. The evaluation committee would like to request the board's approval of the final rankings for civil engineering services and the addition of these firms to a resolution for the pre-approved list for Ada County A and E Services.
Okay, any questions? All right, I'll accept the motion.
I move to approve the final rankings of the civil engineering firms for the RFQ two, zero, four, five, five as presented by our procurement department and direct the staff to prepare a pre-approved list based on such rankings by way of resolution to be adopted by the board.
Is your second on the motion?
I'll second that. Okay.
You've heard the motion, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thanks, commissioners, appreciate it.
Okay, moving into new business, we have an alcohol license. Is there any discussion on this license? Not all, accept the motion.
I'll move to approve the one new alcohol license as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we have a peddler solicitor's license, we have two, one recommended denial, one recommended approval. We'll take these up one at a time. The first one is recommended denial. I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, based on my review of the clerk's investigation, I move to accept the recommendation of the clerk's office and deny the peddler's solicitor license for Jordan Finch as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Is your second motion?
I'll second that. Okay, you've heard the motion, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next one is, uh, is recommended approval. I'll accept the motion.
I move to accept the recommendation of the clerk's office and approve the peddler's solicitor's license for David Baloo as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Carries. Well, we have clerk's office here with us.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. We are looking for a decision that relates to the public defender's transition to the state. I believe the board is aware of the request to sweep the additional sick time over to the post-employment health plan for those folks. This is something that the clerk's office is supportive of, but we just need a decision from the board.
Okay, any question or discussion?
We have discussed this, and I'm supportive of doing that, but we'll take a motion from the board.
Uh, yes, and this is one of those things, it's transition, and we, we have a decision to make whether we could or couldn't, we chose to do that, I think, and I would, I would make that motion if appropriate.
Yeah, well, part of it's the law, we have to do it because the law requires it, but there's another part of it that's not, that's not, that we can, that's over and above what's in the statute.
So, anyway, okay, a motion is appropriate.
I move to approve paying the additional sweep to the post-employment health plan for the eligible public defender employees transitioning from the county to the state.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we have claims journal.
I'll move to authorize payment of claims on the claims journal dated July fifth, twenty twenty four.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion, is there any discussion?
Hearing none, all in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have a few personnel actions. Any questions or discussions on the personnel actions? Hearing none, all accept the motion.
I move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda and that the summary sheet remain on file in the commissioner's office.
Second.
Yeah, you've heard the motion, all in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. What we have with us, head duck with the appraisers, Suster's office. Second.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's a great day, B O E wrapped up yesterday, so.
Yeah.
Got budget out of the way, and B O Es out of the way, so I thought I'd just run by some stats I put together, just because I enjoy looking at stats, but to kind of give you a little overview, and by the way, there's no tax cancellations today, so. Adjustments, but altogether, we sent out almost two hundred and thirty thousand assessment notices this year. Our appraisers worked with a lot of people calling in, and in total, we only had three hundred and sixty-three evaluation appeals, which is super low to begin with. And then of those that requested a hearing, we had a hundred and fifty of them, so it just keeps getting cut in half. And then the hearings that actually took place were eighty-six of them. And we did have some no-shows, so as you know, and during this time, the appraisers are continually working with the opponents. Hearings that actually took place was only sixty-two, and as you know, there was, uh, some opponents had multiple parcels, so we only had twenty, roughly twenty unique opponents. So, and these are numbers we haven't seen for twenty-five years, so just really proud of our appraisers and for the support that we get from, from commissioners. And just a lot of hard work goes into it to bring it down to a workload that's, I mean, we haven't seen that, like I said, in twenty-five years, so it's just amazing, so.
It helps when I have lower taxes.
Yes, the H T R, some of the, some of the credits for that is of the legislature, but the H T R, that is making a big difference.
Oh, yeah.
I think a couple of other things is the consistency of our appraisals. Since Rebecca's come in, we're changing some things and a lot better consistency and the transparency, education, and our social media presence. So, all that coming into play has made a huge difference.
Well, great, we sure appreciate the, your staff and, and helping us.
Yeah, they were.
Work through this, and I'm sure there'll be a few appeals, but there always is.
Yeah, they work hard to keep the minimum over here, and so.
Oh, well, thank you, and thank you.
All right, so that's all I have.
All right, any questions or discussions?
Well, just a reiteration of the thank you to them for all their hard work, because they were very helpful to us in getting our job done.
Yeah, bringing them up. All right, thank you.
All right.
Okay, we have with us our distinguished treasurer today.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. Just an update on the twenty twenty-three property taxes, you know, those were due by June twentieth. So we're doing our final balancing of those numbers and are preparing to do the distribution to the taxing districts. Um, so we currently have roughly two hundred and fifty-five million, but as you'll recall, just twenty percent is paid to the county and the remaining eighty percent, we will be distributing to all other taxing districts, so they can expect to see those funds later this month. So that's what our priority has been this week.
Well, great, anything else?
That's it.
Any questions or discussions, treasure?
We're right on track, that's just the normal schedule that we're on, right?
Correct.
There's no devia, I mean, there's no unusual situation.
Nothing unusual.
And the, uh, the delinquency is about, is about usual?
Um, I'd have to verify that, but our, our collections is consistently in the ninety percent, so.
Okay, good enough, thank you, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is approval of minutes. I'll accept the motion.
I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Motion carries. We have some commercial exhibits for the fair, Expo Idaho. Are there any questions, discussions on these commercial exhibits? Hearing none, all accept the motion.
I'll move to approve the nine commercial exhibitor agreements for the twenty twenty-four Western Idaho Fair as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion, any further discussion or issues? Hearing none, all in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, now we have five agreements to approve. Any question on any of the agreements?
No, it's, it's interesting, we're moving forward on the R T Us, uh, we hope to get them all done this year, which is going to be great. That's, that's two of the four agreements we have on the agenda.
Yeah, and, and I think that's all of our R T Us, is that not?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, that is, uh.
That is it.
Long worship, that's.
All right, we're good.
Almost all.
Good, and so that'll be paid for with non-local tax dollars. Okay, all right, any question on any other agreements? And we've removed agreement number three, oh, one, two, oh, for another day, so I'll accept the motion.
I move to approve the four agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. All right, next item is the indigent services, weekly indigent items. Any discussion or issues on any of the weekly indigent items? Not all, accept the motion.
I'll move to accept the recommendations of the indigent services staff as listed on the summary, summary of cases dated July ninth, twenty twenty four and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, are there any more, any other, any other issues need to be brought before the board? If not, we are adjourned. Thank you. How are you, sir? I'm doing great. We missed the last couple.
Yes.
I had a wonderful vacation. Well, good, yeah, good, where'd you go? Stayed out. Stayed out.
Doing nothing, that's good.
Ride your horses. Yeah.
All right. Fun stuff.
Can I record that, sorry?
Are we on the record?
Yes, sir.
Well, good morning, uh, today is Tuesday, the ninth day of July, the time is nine, uh, seventeen. The board is in session, sitting as the Board of County Emergency Medical Services District, and it's for our weekly open business meeting. All three commissioners are present, we have with us today.
Sean Rain, paramedics.
An I T guy. Okay, ma'am clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, sir.
There are no changes. The first item up is the claims journal, I'll accept the motion on the claims journal.
I'll move to authorize.
That's our guy, go ahead.
I'll move to authorize payment of claims as listed on the claims journal dated July ninth, twenty twenty four, regarding EMS expenditures.
I second the motion.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
We have personnel items, actions.
I move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda and that the summary sheet remain on file in the commissioner's office.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Okay, we now have approvals of minutes for the seven oh two meeting.
I'll move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Hey, any questions or discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Now we get to the best part of the agenda, EMS update.
Yes.
From our esteemed director.
Yes, Mr. Chair, commissioners, uh, good morning. So, uh, last week, we actually had Mayor Simison come and do the ride along experience with Mark Babson. Felt like that went really well, uh, wanted to express to the mayor, you know, our support of Meridian. One point that came up was, uh, we haven't been able to staff Station Eight yet, we just don't have the money for the personnel. So we'll be evaluating that as we go into next budget year. Our call volume is up six percent this year. So crews are busy, and as you can imagine, I'll talk about the heat here in a minute, but, uh, this is going to be a busy week, for sure. But as we look at, at that revenue and then the potential of GMT coming in, which is still up in the air, that would give us the ability to, to staff up at Station Eight. And honestly, uh, I know he wants us out there right now. Uh, when Highway sixteen is finished, which I, you know, I think they're still about a year, year and a half away from that project being finished. At that point in time, that unit will be able to get to Star and West Eagle and out to the freeway very quickly. So it'll have a very large, uh, response area where they can hit, uh, the response time. So I think everything's going to align for that to occur at that point in time, but there's still, uh, a few balls up in the air as far as GMT and what revenue looks like and what the, uh, the new billing company is able to accomplish with, uh, their collection rate. I have a feeling that they're going to do really well, so they've done really well with just the half of the bills that they were doing for us, so.
Well, that's good.
Yeah, uh, so I, I know we've all been watching the weather this week, so, you know, that's kind of the, the word of the week is hot, hot, hot. Uh, you know, and, and our P I O, Ryan LaRondo, has been, uh, working on some social media campaigns. I know that the city and various districts have set up some cooling stations for people that, uh, don't have air conditioning or don't have access to, uh, air conditioning to be able to get in and cool off, but, uh, you know, for the public, it's really, you know, stay out of the heat as much as you can. Um, stay in the shade is kind of the second best, but overall, stay hydrated. And, you know, that's probably the most important thing is just keep drinking that, that water, your Gatorade or what have you, to, to stay hydrated, so that you stay safe. Uh, the only other thing to mention is next week, uh, the new Director of Health and Welfare, Alex Adams, I don't know if, uh, any of you guys know him personally, but uh, he's doing, uh, the ride along experience, so.
Oh, fantastic.
Yeah, so I believe that is Tuesday next, Tuesday or Thursday next week, I can't remember, it's on my calendar, but.
Oh.
So we're looking forward to that.
He's a great guy.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I've met him once, uh, very briefly, he does seem like a great guy.
Actually, I, I, I lobbied to get him there in that position.
Oh, okay.
At the very beginning of the administration.
Excellent, excellent. Yeah, so we're looking forward to that. Yeah, he's.
Could be an interesting change for him.
Yeah, going from budget to.
Well, going from head of, head of the pharmacy department, head of pharmacy board.
Yeah.
Budgets, pharmacy budget, and now I help.
Help welfare, and more, more of the largest agencies in the state.
Maybe the GMT might move along a little faster.
Maybe, yeah, we're hoping.
Certainly make a pitch to him.
Yeah, that's, that, we, we will certainly make it a, an issue, so.
Yeah, show him the empty station, though, that's.
Right, that's right, we need that open.
It's waiting to get the GMT, uh, bills.
Yeah.
Now, is the hangup on that, is it the feds? Because we've got our statewide plan.
Uh, we're hearing a little bit of back and forth, you know, we've met with, with, uh, the state Medicaid director several times, and they've been, um, pinging CMS on a weekly basis to say, what's the holdup, what's the holdup? Um, the president of the National Association of E M Ts, uh, and a group met with CMS, um, virtually, they were supposed to meet in D, in D C, uh, but they had to meet, I think, a week or two later, and the, the feds were kind of saying, well, it's on the state. Um, but there's nothing for the state, they've answered all the questions that CMS has asked, and they were pretty low-hanging fruit kind of questions and adjusted the state plan, so, uh, I think it's, you know, CMS just wanting to point fingers. I really think it comes back down to them trying to determine what actual cost can be included. And so we'll just have to see when the final ruling comes out and they approve the state plan of what, what costs they're going to allow. We know that the cost for what we do will be allowed because we do the transport.
So are they still hanging on just the transport?
Mm-hmm, that's what it seems. Uh, and that's, that's what I'm assuming is going to happen, and then if there are any additional costs, then I'll just have a smile on my face and know that, that it worked out better.
Yeah, well, this is, this, what's this been now, forty-three, forty years since?
Yeah, the law went through in twenty twenty-two, so.
Yeah, twenty twenty-two, yeah, so.
It's been quite the process and frustrating, but, uh, unless somebody can go up to D C with a big crowbar and, and unlog the boulder that is CMS, I don't see anything else happening.
A lot of boulders need to be lodged.
That is true.
Yes, there are a lot of boulders there.
There are.
That just, that, that, that'd just be one, and on the, on, on the heat, at least we can, uh, we can have some solace that it's not just Boise.
Yeah.
Have you seen those maps across the United States?
Oh, my goodness.
It's everywhere.
Yeah.
It's everywhere, and I don't think it's climate change, I think it's just the sun.
You know, what was a year before last, it was, uh, I remember it was really, really hot even before this time hit us, about a week earlier. And we had, we always seem to get this stretch of.
Hundred degrees. I think three, was it three years ago, on this very day, we had a hundred and nine degrees.
Yeah.
And that's probably what we'll have today.
That's a, that's a good or an interesting point, too. I know, uh, Camille Rogers is our emergency preparedness coordinator, and she's, uh, working with Bob Batista, trying to determine the, the best, or, uh, probably the, the best, I guess you would call it, level of staffing for the music festival. And it's so dependent on heat, uh, about five years ago, it was a hundred and six down there, and, uh, every one of us were out getting people out of the crowd, you know, that were unconscious, having heat exhaustion, putting IVs in, and at one point in time, I think we had forty people in our, our hospital tent outside of the building. And, uh, it has a really complex HVAC system that goes with it, but there were so many people inside that tent at that point in time that the, uh, air conditioning couldn't overcome the humidity, so we had to resort to buckets full of ice water and towels that we would wrap around people's necks to keep them cool, yeah, just, uh, it's so dependent on the heat, and so same thing with the very first football game of the year down at Boise State, if it's really early, where you can have those hot temps, we, we up or increase the staffing down there because we know we'll be busy. Cause people get out there and they're in the tail, or, you know, out tailgating for three or four hours before the game and.
You don't, you don't mind the heat when you're drinking.
Yeah, you don't mind it until you, while you're drinking, until you get a little bit dehydrated and then we come into play, but, yeah, it's, uh, uh, it's an interesting thing. But it, I looked like the first game this year until like the twenty-first of September, so.
Yeah, they play a couple, I don't know, out of state, out of state games first.
So that's, uh, that'll be a blessing for us later in, later in September, the chance of it being over a hundred is much less, so.
Well, this is supposed to just be temporary, this heat wire, but, uh.
Yeah.
I think it probably will, but, yeah, I hope it isn't, all right?
I hope it is, too.
Yeah, well, anyway, uh, anything else?
That is it.
Is the, uh, community paramedic program, is that going now?
Yeah, uh, that program's been up, they started up a year ago, May, and, uh, they've been out mainly focused on mental health diversions, um, follow-ups with patients that are referred from the field for a variety of issues, you know, where they've gone into an elderly. that are referred from the field for a variety of issues, you know, where they've gone into an elderly person's home where they have a lot of trip hazards. And what they do there is they don't go in and fix the issues necessarily, but they find resources for that person to come, you know, help install, uh, grab bars and, um, you know, mitigate, uh, carpet trip hazards and that kind of thing. Uh, but then also for, um, our frequent customers that call for, um, a variety of different reasons or maybe the same reason over and over again. They try to go out and, you know, again, get those people, uh, some kind of resources to help them so they're not calling nine-one-one so much, so. But, yeah, the program, um, we have three, uh, people that are on, well, actually, one community paramedic on twenty-four hours a day. So, one on each shift.
Okay, well, good enough. Give, give Alex our regards.
Will do.
Yes.
And, uh, Tom, welcome, welcome to the services of Ada County.
Will do.
Yeah, well, good enough. Well, if there's nothing else that needs to be brought before the, uh, the board, I will be adjourned.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Sean. You bet.